I'm handing it off.
Are you guys gonna come here?
Yeah.
Absolutely, yes. We are moving into pre-town meeting.
We have a lot of people on screen.
Yeah.
Nineteen people.
So now, okay, and so Rich, you'll pay attention if anyone raises their hand. Okay.
Great.
Great, good evening, everybody. My name is Scott Carey, and I'm the town moderator. And I'd like to welcome everybody to our pre-town meeting get-together. Just a couple of things I wanted to touch base on as we get prepared for a week from Saturday. Couple of things, I'm gonna ask Jackie to speak to clarification around an override, and so more of a little bit of an educational for everybody. But I also wanted to take a minute because I don't know if some of you come across this on social media. There's been some people making some comments about social media, and I just want to clear up a couple of things. The reasoning for the town meeting being moved to Saturday was not for any other reason other than the school gymnasium is not available right now due to the construction of the school. So there's some people put some reasons on social media. I know Amy probably saw some of that stuff. But it's very unfortunate when people make almost slanderous comments about the board, and I just wanted to let you know that the board is making those decisions based upon the fact that the gym is not available. So anybody that thinks that Saturday was trying to box out somebody from being in there is inappropriate. And I just wanted to clarify that, so we're all on the same page. And so what I thought we would do tonight, what we've done in the past few years, is we'll kind of do an overview of the articles, the process, and if people have specific questions, you know, invite the various people that might be able to speak to that. If it's not something that I feel comfortable dealing with, you know, if it's a finance question or so on and so forth, the board may want to say something. So we can kind of do that. We'll avoid kind of getting into pros and cons on the issue, more of an educational and the process type of thing, I think, what we're here for tonight. So I just, because there's overrides on the budget, I thought Jackie and we talked earlier today, maybe just kind of give people an overview of what is an override, what it applies to. Because it applies to some articles, but it doesn't apply necessarily to the overall operating budget. I just thought if you could take a couple of minutes.
Okay, thank you. So I think the misunderstanding or miscommunication about what Proposition Two and a Half is, and it was a law, it's actually Massachusetts General Law fifty-nine something. And it was established in nineteen eighty to set limits on how a town, any town in the state, could add to the levy, could raise property taxes without permission from the voters in one year. And it was two and a half percent of last year's levy limit, plus new growth, plus new revenue, plus excluded debt. So that's why it's hard to, it's not two and a half percent of last year's budget. It's two and a half percent of the levy limit with all of those other things included. And it is confusing. So we try to explain it, but it is confusing. So when you see a debt exclusion, it means that we are asking you to allow us to raise the taxes to pay for that specific thing over a period of years and add that to the levy. Right? If you, if you see the term override, it means that we're asking the voters to give us more than two and a half percent for a specific purpose or for a general purpose. And this year's override, for instance, is a general override to fund staff salaries for three years for our newly negotiated contracts and to fund a school cost override. So we've added those two together to seven hundred and ten thousand dollars. So five fifty is the general operating budget for salaries, and one sixty is for the school override. It gets, I'm gonna just make one more comment. So in the operating budget, that hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the school is added into that. So when we're saying a four point eight nine percent increase in the budget, that override, if you approve it, is included in that. If not, we'll have to subtract that. Not to make something not clear even murkier, but that's the best I can do.
I think you did great, thank you very much. Couple other things, and I was in front of the board a couple of weeks ago, and been up to the high school a number of times, and if people are watching at home as well, I'm just encouraging everyone to please make plenty of time on the morning, Saturday morning, because there are gonna be some spots that were up close to the building that are not gonna be available. So if somebody who may be walking challenged, the police are gonna do everything that they can to make it as smooth as possible. But just, you know, just want to give everybody the heads up that maybe a little bit of extra time next Saturday, a week from Saturday will be necessary. And again, just as we start to look out at the forecast, I'll be making, you know, any weather-related calls in conjunction with, you know, Jackie and the Police Department. But we'll knock on wood that it all goes smooth a week from Saturday, and we'll be able to go forward. But just so everyone's aware that, you know, that's one of the elements out there. So before we kind of dive into any, does anybody in the audience or at home have any specific questions about the process of the event? I don't know if anybody's new to town meeting, but if there's any overall questions that anybody might have about, you know, how it works or anything like that? Happy to take those. I don't see, oh, yes, ma'am.
Really basic question from a first-time town meeting participant. I know it starts at ten. Is there an end time?
Four thirty-five o'clock. No, no. I think, they usually go about two hours.
Two to three hours.
Bring snacks.
Yeah. And clothes, like, we don't know. I mean, up until two days before, we won't know whether it's gonna be eighty or forty-two. So, you know, dress in layers. We do have tents, but still.
We're very excited you'll be joining us.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Great, okay. Anybody from, Rich, has anybody at home or no? Okay. So with that being said, everybody's got the warrant, and you'll be getting one in the mail. And one of the nicest parts about the warrant I always find is you'll get a report of the Select Board at the beginning. Kind of gives you a lay of the land of what they're thinking. And, you know, since they put the budget together in correlation with the various committees around town, and Jackie. So that kind of gives you their, kind of, the lay of the land from their point of view. Followed by a report of the Finance Committee. They kind of give you their thoughts and comments and opinions about how they looked at the warrant and all of the articles within. But I think those are really nice things to kind of lead you off. And I know that there's opportunities if you have questions for the Select Board or the Finance Committee on the day, you know, we can kind of work those in. So if anybody has any specific questions on their reports, we're certainly willing to put them on the spot if need be. And so then you kind of get into your table of contents, which lists out the, you know, the articles, which will be the, kind of, the menu of the day that we'll go through after some, you know, protocols that we do before we get started. So we'll kind of just, unless the Select Board has anything overarching to any of you, would like to make any comments, or Jamie?
I don't think so. I think just one quick thing that I think is important is that I was just informed we are coming up with a final transportation plan for folks that are, you know, that have some disability or trouble walking to the front since the parking's gonna be limited. So that'll be put on social media, so people are aware of how to arrive and how to leave.
Great. Thank you, Jamie. Anybody else from the board? Great, so we'll just kind of go through, and I'll just kind of read out the article for tonight. And if anybody has any thoughts or comments, we'll just, we'll kind of roll through this and see where we go. So Article One, I always consider these first few are sort of like housecleaning items. Or the first one's just sort of a housecleaning item. But anybody has a question on that? Okay, seeing none. And then Article Two A is, you know, the general fund operating budget for the town. And you can kind of see, you know, we break this up into categories, and when we go at town meeting, we'll divide them up into sections by, and then we'll, you know, take questions on the budget as a whole, and then we'll do individual sections. For instance, you know, I might get to a point where somebody says, under unallocated expenditures, somebody might have a question, so that would be a section. We'll kind of have those divided up, so you'll be able to follow along and see if somebody raises their hand or has a question or comment in one of the sections after we look at the budget as a whole. I don't know if anybody has a question about, I see a question. Why don't we start with Mary Shaw?
I just want to comment that under the summary for Article Two A at the bottom, Community Preservation Committee, in regard to the CPA funding of an administrative position, is included in line sixteen, not fifteen.
Also, if someone's gonna ask a question, can they come to a microphone so the people?
Yeah, we have them up here.
Yeah, so just so the people at home and on Zoom can hear the question.
Thank you for pointing that out, Mary. Jackie, is that something that at town meeting I would make a comment to say that that's just so? Can I make a note that I want to do that, or is that?
You can. It explains, line sixteen is community development, and we've added a halftime position that's funded with CPA funds in that position. So people may ask the question, because there's nothing in line fifteen. So it can't possibly be line fifteen, because there's no addition there. My sense is how usually people do it when they ask questions at town meeting is that they will look at the budget, and they'll say, how come line sixteen is sixty-one thousand dollars? Like, what does, what makes up that amount? Those are the types of questions we usually get. So you can point it out. We updated the lining, the numbering of the budget, and we forgot to go back over the summary, and that's why there's a difference there.
Thank you, Mary. Carolyn, did you have a question you want to come up to the mic, or you wanna?
Well, it's a quick one. My question is that under public safety, it looks like there's projected to be a point oh five percent increase. So does that mean there's no salary increases for any of those departments?
It means that there's step increases for those departments. And in public safety, we also had some retirements. So we're hiring, you know, less experienced patrol or fire officers to take those places. So there's step increases, but no COLA increases there, included in the other article.
Which is, I'm sorry.
Two C.
Okay. Any other questions on the budget as a whole? Yes, ma'am. You wanna come on up?
Hi there, just a question about for the hundred and sixty thousand increase for the school budget. What's that for?
I'll do it unless you. So it's basically two, three items. One was the elementary school had an increase because there is a special needs student that needs out-of-school placement. So that's expensive, and that is for this year alone. Right? The tech budget is up, not particularly because it increased a great deal, but because we have four extra students that are going to the tech. So that increases that line item. And the NOSIT school budget is up because there's central office, the regional, not salaries, but administrative costs, transportation. All of those costs were much higher inflation this year. And then the third big element is there's more kids leaving the district that we're paying to go to other schools, charter schools or other schools. So those three items together. So it's a cluster of things, really.
Anybody else on the budget? Okay. Seeing none, seeing none at home, Rich? Okay. So we'll take a look at Article Two B. Anybody question, concerns on?
You can do all the cap.
All right. I don't see any, so we'll kind of move to Two C. Thank you. So seeing none there, we'll move over to Article Three A, which is the five-year capital plan that's presented by the Select Board.
And the five-year capital plan is really just, other than this year is a fixed expense, but the capital plan is really our planning tool to let you know what might be coming. It's not fixed in stone, and we can move, those costs will move around from year to year.
I have a question in the back. Come on.
Maybe I just missed it in the fine. Maybe I just missed the fine print. But in fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, there's a ninety-two million dollar bond. What is that for?
Ninety million of it is a.
Seventeen, page seventeen?
It's on page twenty-one.
Oh, okay.
Ninety million is for an anticipated wastewater implementation project. And then two million would be engineering and design of roadways for Route Six project, if that were to proceed.
Okay, thank you, Rich. Article Three B is the capital budget. Jackie, or Rich, you want to say?
Yeah, capital budget represents, based on this five-year capital plan that we do, we go through, and anything that's reflected on, you know, Three A in FY twenty-four has made it to the point of we're ready to move on the project. And so Three B represents the funding associated with, of what we are, the actual projects we're anticipating doing in FY twenty-four. So it is a little bit, it's broken out a little bit finer than just Three B. Three B represents the things that we're self-funding. So mostly from free cash. We also contribute about four hundred thousand dollars of our tax levy to our capital budget each year. So you'll see that in there, and there could be other funds. A big one, for example, would be our ambulance fund pays for a lot of our EMS-type requests. However, there are things in our five-year capital plan that require bonding, and so therefore you see those in Articles Three B and Three C, I'm sorry, Three C and Three D. So B is the things that we can do ourselves, self-funding. And Three C and D represent items in the capital plan that'll be borrowed, anticipated to be borrowed. Because of the order of magnitude, the cost of the items are enough that we don't keep sufficient resources on hand to do them.
Thank you, Rich. I don't see any questions. So Article, oh, there's a, oh, sorry, yes, sir.
Sorry, my eyes are bad. Is this one point eight five nine on the bottom of page twenty-three? Is that, does that show up somewhere in the budgets that's on twelve and thirteen? Or is that not, is that a separate?
It's additional, it's separate.
Separate money. So the point of clarification on Articles, budgets in Article Two, those are things that are annual recurring budgets. And so we differentiate them, because Article Two represents operating budgets, annual recurring expenses that we fund with annually recurring revenues. And we want to make sure they're structurally sound. Article Three money is the capital budget. So Article Three, we could use one-time sources, because they're one-time sources of expenses or infrequent expenses.
Great, thank you. Great question, great answer.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
In maybe one minute or less, could you explain free cash to everyone?
Well, I feel like everyone, it's a great, because it gets, and it's not free.
Free cash is what the state, the state certifies an amount of available surplus each year, and they call it free cash. What it really represents is unused appropriations from the prior year. So we're, in Article Two A, we have a thirty-eight million dollar budget. If we only spend thirty-seven million of that thirty-eight, because there are some, you know, elements of conservatism within our budget, and we always say it's not necessarily what you budget, it's what you actually spend. So we spend a lot of time focusing on the spending, making sure we're spending appropriately. So if we spend thirty-seven of the thirty-eight million, we have a million dollars of unused appropriations. That doesn't go to waste. It gets, it gets, it becomes surplus, and that surplus becomes what the state certifies as free cash. And that's what we rely on and utilize to fund our capital budget. We're heavily reliant on free cash, our annual surpluses, to fund our capital plan. Likewise, of our thirty-eight million dollar budget, we also have thirty-eight million dollars of revenues. As I, in response to your question, if we're gonna have an annually recurring cost, there needs to be an annually recurring revenue that is going to fund it. We don't fund things with one-time sources. So if we budget thirty-eight million dollars of revenues, but we collect thirty-nine million dollars of revenue, we've got a million dollars of a revenue surplus. So any appropriation or budget surpluses and any revenue surpluses, there are surpluses that sit in our general fund, and at the end of the year, by law, we have to submit financial statements and reports to the state. And through those reports, they will go through a process to determine what they're gonna certify as free cash. And that's basically our unreserved general fund surplus. So we use free cash in town here to fund our capital plan, to fund our reserves, and any other things that come about that we need to address, that aren't part of the annual operating budget. If those things come about often enough, and they need to be part of the annual operating budget, then we'll add them into the budget and try to figure out a way to fund them with recurring revenues. And sometimes that's why you need an override, because there are no other recurring revenues. But you've got to add things that cost more than a two and a half percent increase in a year.
And I just want to add one more thing, because this always was confusing to me, is even though it's certified as free cash, it will sit there until you appropriate it at town meeting for some purpose. In other words, we can't spend any money without town meeting's approval. So it's either in the budget, or it's certified as free cash, and then we'll use it in next year's budget. And that's kind of how it flows.
Great. Thank you, and thank you for the great question, Suzanne. So we'll move into Article Three C, Rock Harbor dredging.
So this is a, we share Rock Harbor with the town of Orleans, and every ten years, we do a maintenance dredging of Rock Harbor. There's a lot of shoaling. It's highly tidal, and there's a lot of shoaling, so it requires once every ten years or so a dredge. Last year, it filled in, and we had to do an emergency mini-dredge, which the town of Orleans paid for, hoping that we would reimburse them the following year. So that is included in this amount. But the dredge and all its procurement is shared between the two towns.
Great. And I just wanted to add, Scott, this and the next Three D are debt exclusions. And just to add on what Jackie had mentioned earlier, a debt exclusion does raise property taxes for the amount of the debt service on these borrowings, but only for the time and only for the purpose of the debt service on the borrowings. So when the debt service is paid, the ability to raise those taxes goes away as well.
Great. Yeah, and you'll see that when you look in the beginning of your, this will be on your ballot, you'll see this referenced at the beginning of the warrant, which will tie into this article. It'll also tie into Article Three D. And ask any questions from the board or comments on the board on Three D?
So basically, the town has been working on its wastewater plan since two thousand and eight, Jane? Two thousand and eight. And we have been doing all kinds of smaller work leading up to this large piece. So part of it has been to explore any options or technologies that would help prevent us from needing a wastewater system, a formal system. And, but most of it has been research on what exactly the impairment of the water bodies are and how best to address it. And we've had a set of consultants, a couple of different sets of consultants looking at this for all those years. At this point, we have a draft wastewater management plan that is ready to go to the Department of Environmental Protection. And so this article basically asks to continue that process and actually design a small wastewater and collection system for a portion of the town that most affects the watershed in question, Salt Pond, and also provides a permanent permeable reactive barrier that will help take, block nitrogen from going into Salt Pond. We have a pilot project that's done really well. It's removed almost eighty-six percent of the nitrogen flowing its way, so we're gonna invest in the more permanent solution. It also includes stormwater and wastewater in our, stormwater in particular for our, two of our town landings, Collins and Hemmenway, and for Salt Pond and several other sites. And, oh, and some investigation of IA systems. And the reason we're asking this year, the reason it's important this year is twofold. One is there are all kinds of monies available right now from the state, the county, and the federal government to help us pay for these things. And I'm very afraid that if we wait, those sources of revenue will not be there. And they include zero percent loans from the State Revolving Fund, which is helping us pay for water now, which will help us pay for wastewater. The County Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund, which will give us, towards the capital costs, at least a fifteen percent reduction. So they'll give us fifteen percent of the total cost of any construction. And the USDA is stepping up to contribute towards the stormwater, some of the other projects. So it's a good time to do it. But the better reason even is that the State of Massachusetts DEP has proposed new regulations that would require towns without a wastewater management plan to require every resident in a sensitive, nitrogen-sensitive area to upgrade to innovative alternative septic systems. Whether you just got your Title V yesterday, or you have a cesspool from forty years ago, it won't matter. And so we believe strongly that this is a community problem and needs a community solution, not, it shouldn't be based on individual taxpayers having to come up with forty or fifty thousand dollars to upgrade their systems. We should collectively try and work out this problem together. And I'm now convinced, after doing the math the other day, that it is honestly cheaper to do the community solution than it would be to upgrade everyone's septic system. So that's the short reason. And if anyone has any technical questions, Ms. Crowley is here to answer those.
And just, you know, as I said, I think one of the, you know, things that I like to do as a moderator is point out things that I think are helpful to the public. And there is quite a comprehensive write-up on this article in your warrant. So if you're at home and you don't have your warrant, it goes, you know, all twenty, page twenty-five and twenty-six is, you know, is very informative, and it helps you make a decision that you're comfortable with after, and I think there's a fair amount of presentation there, so.
And Mr. Moderator, I'm so sorry, I forgot the most important thing. And that is our brilliant Finance Director has figured out a way to pay the debt service on this article from recurring funds, our short-term rental tax funds. So therefore, even though we are asking for your permission to borrow and exclude this debt, asking for your permission to borrow and exclude this debt, we believe it will not affect the tax rate, this almost $6 million borrowing, because we have almost $1 million a year in short-term rental tax money that we will apply to that debt service.
Yeah, I just want to follow up a couple of things on what Jackie said is, in order to access all these funds that are maybe available to us to reduce the cost of the, Suzanne, I'm sorry, no, someone in the audience had asked, what's the $90 million? The ultimate construction of a wastewater collection system and treatment plant would be quite significant. What we, so the devil's in the details of how we get there. It's going to cost us what it costs, but can we use other people's money to pay for that cost? The only way to access other people's money, the federal and the state government, is to have, you know, I hate the term, but it's what everybody calls a shovel-ready project. We need our engineering and design done and ready to go, and can demonstrate to these other funding sources that we're ready to move on a project. We can't ask anybody to commit, you know, for example, $90 million to us, and not have done the design and not done our homework. So this is kind of the entree into that, and effort being able to do that. And don't pump me up too much yet, because I don't want, you know, fall, falling short. But we do, everything we've done in Article 2, in Article 3, in our five-year capital plan is done deliberately with a plan. And that plan, from day one, when I first arrived in town, was, what was new to the town was the collection of the short-term rental tax for third-party rentals in town, which is up over $1.1 million for this year. And in talking with the select board and with Jackie, we deliberately have not utilized the vast majority of that. We have utilized some for a couple of things, but some of those things will be going away. But the vast majority of that million-plus dollars is going to be available, has never been used to fund the operating budget, which is why we've generated a good free cash. It's why we've been able to get our reserve balances to where they are and where they're supposed to be. And now that we've done those things, now it's going to be available to pay for this debt service. So to the earlier question on the debt exclusion, you raised the debt exclusion and the ability to raise the debt, raise the property taxes to pay for this debt service, but only if you actually have to pay for the debt service. So if we're using, just for sake of argument, if the debt service on this $6 million is a million dollars a year, and we have a million dollars of short-term rental money available for us to use it, we will not be able to raise property taxes, also the million dollars. The million dollars from the short-term rentals will pay for it, and the taxes will not go up. And then what we need to do, once we get through this planning effort and get closer to perhaps implementing a permanent solution, we've, there's more work that needs to be done on the financing of that. But a good element of that would be transitioning, is paying off this design and engineering money, and no longer have that behind us, repurpose the short-term rental taxes for the bigger debt service nut, and also looking at debt drop-off from our water project. Because in, starting in FY '26, in just two years, some of our first bonds from the water project will have been paid off, and the taxes, and the amount of taxes needing to be raised to pay for the water project will become less. And maybe that's an opportune time, depending on what the level of tax burden is in town, to repurpose that to go forward on the larger wastewater project. So it's a matter of, can we use other people's money to finance this in the long term? Can we utilize our short-term rentals? And can we manage our debt drop-off so that we don't see a huge spike in tax burden because of all these big costs that are coming down the pike?
Great. Thanks, Rich. Art?
Just to kind of summarize what Jackie and Rich said, we're going to be talking about wastewater a lot.
A lot.
In the coming years. The administration and Jackie have, if you're on our flashes, have started to give some information and explain the whole wastewater situation and the watershed management. So you need to pay attention and get those and listen to those. But you're going to be hearing a lot more about wastewater. So you need to be ready for that.
Couple of questions. Yeah, anyone of you want to go to the mic? And we should probably get into the habit of telling us your name and address, because we will be doing that at a town meeting, so we might as well.
Sure. My name is Tom Troyano, and I live on Coyson Court. I just want to make sure that I understood everything. I really appreciate that. But it's a little bit head spinning when you don't live and breathe this every day. So is the, is the net of this 3D that we're going to sell bonds to, for this $6 million, the debt service on those bonds, we have the money in an account that we already need to pay for that. So there's really no additional cost, and I hate to use this word, but there's no, this isn't like a Prop 2.5 override, where your taxes are going to go up for five years for this very specific thing. In this case, it's, it's bonds, and the money is already there to pay the debt service. Is that an accurate reflection of everything I just heard?
Yeah.
Correct. Dan, sorry.
That's the plan.
That's the plan. And the reason for the debt exclusion, however, is we need the backstop. We need to know that, you know, if interest rates, you know, are relatively moderate now, but if interest rates were 10%, we might have a problem paying that debt service with just the short-term rentals. We're not anticipating that. But again, it's a backstop. So the debt exclusion provides a backstop to ensure that they can be paid for, which hopefully will give us a better bond rating as well. When there's reassurance of funding sources to pay for debt, you tend to get a higher bond rating. But that being said, when the actual bill comes due, we're planning on using the short-term rental tax to pay for the debt service.
Thank you.
And there also is an article on the warrant to establish a stabilization fund for wastewater that will transfer this year's short-term rental tax into that fund to help us. So it's like a, we're starting a savings account, basically.
I saw another, yes, Matt, if you want to line up?
Hi, Pat McDonald, 230 Goody Hallett Drive. This may be a dumb question, but
No dumb question.
On both 3C and 3D, the language is saying to appropriate or borrow the sum of, in one case, $1.8 million, or any other sum. And the same thing on this $5.9 million, or any other sum.
That's a great question.
I'm asking because, given our experience with the school budget, which started big and then got
Bigger.
Huge.
Yeah.
I'm curious
So
what leeway that gives us.
The town meeting warrant is a warning. It's basically a roadmap of what exactly will be discussed at town meeting, and what our plan is going into town meeting. The motions that are read on the floor by the select board, when they move a question, will tell you the exact amount. We can't go from that exact amount. So we have to. If it's $1.8 million, and that's in the motion, then that is the absolute limit of what we can borrow. So thank you for asking that question, because a lot of the legal language gives us options. So because, you know, six weeks ago, we didn't, we weren't sure on something, but our attorney makes us put those things in so that if the motion does change, and the amount does change, we can make that change.
Okay, that's very helpful to know. Thank you. Second question, and maybe this is my lack of knowledge of the whole wastewater plan, but is the assumption that over time we're going to have searing for the entire town?
No. So the purpose of having the watershed, and, do you want me, I'm going to go for it, Jane, and then if you need to. The purpose of having a watershed management plan is that it is, it allows for solving the problem, removing the levels that the state believes we need to remove of nitrogen and other
Nutrients.
minerals?
Nutrients.
Nutrients. And at the same time, with the smallest footprint. So it takes what we have to clean up, adds a little bit of growth to that, and gives us, you know, the size of the system that we have to build. So we're hoping to build this system, and use the permeable reactive barriers, and use some alternative technologies. So 40 years from now, or 35 years from now, when Phase 2 comes along, Phase 2 might be much smaller. It might not be able, it might not need to be hooked up to the sewer. It might be a collaboration with Orleans that we're working on, so it goes the other way. So no, there's no, I don't believe there's any possibility that all 6,100 Eastham properties will ever be on sewer.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for great questions. Any, Jim?
Jane's discuss.
Jim Russo, Massa Sawyer Road. Is there any obligation on behalf of the Mass DOT, which is the abutter for Salt Pond and Collins Landing, and is, and the federal government that surrounds Salt Pond, is there any obligation, or is it this part of the management program that we have to adopt before trying to do anything with them?
I'm going to answer this question. I'm going to get, no. Personally, obviously, they own it, and they own a portion of the pollution that's going into Salt Pond and our other waterways. So they have a moral obligation. They don't seem to acknowledge a formal material obligation. So we have been working with them in every way possible to, and that's where USDA funds and some of the other funds come. I'm not saying that the town will have to pay 100%. We don't. So we do, Jane has worked very hard to find grants and loans, and to force the feds to sort of step in, and the USDA really has, to say, we'll pay for stormwater mitigation in the two town landings, Salt Pond and several of the other ponds. But you're absolutely right. And it was at a Wellfleet meeting with the DOT a few months ago, Art and I were present, and, you know, the same issue came up. You know, we have all kinds of bad drainage. Why aren't you helping us pay for that?
The stormwater issue is, you know, it's all part and parcel of the same problem. We've got a certain amount of nitrogen we need to remove from each of our watersheds, which the plan that Jane's been working on kind of indicates, indicates what the level of problem, level of issue is, and the solutions we need to make that removal happen. In some cases, the removal can be IA systems, or a permeable reactive area. But around the Salt Pond area, the draft plan indicates that a searing area is needed because of the amount of removal that's needed. And to the particular question with stormwater, stormwater is just a small piece of the overall nitrogen contribution. 80% plus is on, is septic systems from individual property owners.
But we do have some specific plans on Route 6 for stormwater mitigation. We've been meeting and talking about those, a couple of retention ponds, some various things to help reduce that stormwater nitrogen. We're all working on that.
And the map that you see in the warrant is a general scope of the Phase 1.
Right. Don't
It's not exact. It's just to give you a general idea of the area.
If your property's in it or not in the map, doesn't necessarily mean in the long run it will be there. That's what the study's for, to figure out where this, this will be. But this is the general area we know now. It would be covered.
And just one more thing. If you look in the warrant, under the strategic planning section, there is a whole couple of pages around the Minister's Schoolhouse Pond Stormwater Mitigation, which is just a phenomenal project that Jane did last year and the year before. So.
Great. Thank you, everybody. Why don't we go to Article 4A, other appropriations? Anybody has any questions?
Mr. Moderator, just to summarize, we talked about operating budget in Article 2, annual revenues and annual expenses. Article 3 being the capital budget, use one-time expenditures or infrequent expenditures with one-time sources of revenue. Article 4 represents kind of the catch-all. Everything else that's not operating capital kind of falls into Article 4. So that's why the first items are funding of reserves, for example, and some smaller level things that are, you know, grant matching funds aren't a capital project, although the overall project that's funded by a grant might be a capital project, but the, our matching funds aren't.
Thank you. And we'll kind of roll along to Article 4B. Anybody at home? No? Okay. And 4C is establishing fund a wastewater capital stabilization fund.
This was what Jackie was talking about earlier, about establishing the fund for the short-term rental tax money.
Okay. So set up the fund. The money is to be transferred from the short-term into the stabilization fund that can reduce the debt.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Jamie, for that. Okay, we have Article 4D is authorization of leases.
Mr. Moderator, just on 4D and 4E, state law limits the amount of time that we can issue a contract to three years, unless we have town meeting approval for specific things. And if it involves real estate, as it does in 4D, we need to be specific as to the parcel. So this is our cell tower lease on town land.
So to bypass the state law?
Those cell tower leases are, are long-term leases.
It's to comply with the state.
Comply. You know.
I love it.
All right. Anybody have any questions on that?
I just didn't understand the lease. It says that it starts at $25,000, goes up 5% per year for the next five years, and then repeats itself, starting with $25,000 again. Is, am I understanding that right? So that a new lease would cost them less than what they're paying today? Well, I know, but that's
This lease, annual rent.
Rent is $25,000 in the first year, with 5% increase each subsequent year, up to five additional leases, blah, blah, blah.
No, those are, those are subleases.
Okay.
So not uncommon, and you have a, you know, one cell tower. It's not just one person on it. You might, you know, Sprint, Verizon, AT&amp;T, you know, you name it.
We get money from each of them.
Each of them are the minimum of $25,000.
And we have two towers, so we have two sets of leases.
Okay. So that's 4D and 4E. All right. We can look at 5A. This was what we kind of talked about earlier. There is provision in the bylaws that requires the town meeting to be in the town of Eastham, the select board, due to the complications with the high school over the next year or two, is asking for a town meeting to give approval to be able to make decisions based upon what's best for the town and the citizens.
And of course, the intention is to go back to the first Monday in May at 6 o'clock, or whatever our evening time was for that.
And we'll know a lot more next, you know, in the next, next winter, where they're at, the high school, and what's going well, and so on.
And it's only Orleans and Wellfleet.
Right.
I'm not going to get you going to Boston or Worcester.
The hinterlands of San Antonio. So, okay. We're good there. Article 5B.
Mr. Moderator, we do have a question.
Oh, question.
I'm going to promote Roy Maroli to the audience. Roy, you've been promoted. You have to unmute yourself.
I'm unmuted.
Okay, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
I don't have, I don't have a question. I thought there was a question from me. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
You accidentally raised your hand, I think.
Oh, oh, okay. I got it. I apologize.
All right. We're glad you're with us.
Thank you.
So we'll go back to 5B, clarification, authorization on town clerk. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that. Okay. So 5C, I don't know if anybody wants to speak to this consolidation of cemetery board of commissioners?
I can, I can speak to it.
It's all Art's fault.
Mr. Art Arino, please.
We have a historic district commissioner, we have We have a Historic District Commission, and we have a Cemetery Commission. The responsibility of the Cemetery Commission has changed over the past years. It used to be that they maintained the cemetery. Right now, the maintenance of cemetery, the cemetery is done by the DPW. And the Cemetery Commission, the number of members of that has continually dwindled until we ended up with one. So we talked to the Cemetery Commission, and we talked to the Historic District. And since those are historic cemeteries, we thought it made sense to consolidate the responsibilities for those. This is the first step in doing that. To disband the Cemetery Commission, we have to do this. And then there's some other work we have to do, but this is the first step. So we'll consolidate all that responsibility within Historic District Commission.
Great. And I have a quick...
Not Historic District, Historic Committee.
Is this for any specific cemetery in town, or is there one specific you're referring?
It's for the Cove and for the, what's it?
It's on Bridge Road.
Okay. So it does not have anything to do with Evergreen?
No. It's private.
This is just those two cemeteries.
Okay. Do you have any questions on that? Thank you, Art. Article 6 is Petition the General Court for Permanent Conservation Restrictions. Got a nice summary in there on this article?
Basically, this was approved by town meeting in 2020, and we're bringing it back because we forgot four words, petition the general court. So we had to, we have to revote the article with the words petition the general court. And this is land off of Nauset Road where the new water tower is going in, so it will ser, it's the land that's, the 21 acres that surrounds that area.
The water tower?
Yep.
Another thing that, just when you, when you are looking at your warrant, you know, tonight, and as you read it every night this week to get prepared, you'll see the, if there's a vote, you know, some are a majority vote, but others are two-thirds vote. This particular one that Jackie was referring is a two-thirds majority. So, and we have the little counters that help us out, they're town clerks, so we'll be able to move through those. But, thank you, Jackie. So Articles 7A, 7B, 7C, 7D are zoning articles. I'm sorry, 7E, 7F, so, 7G.
Yeah, it goes to G.
H.
Oh, no, H.
7H zoning, ZBA review standard, sorry. So 7A through 7G are zoning articles, and then 7H is a zoning review standards article.
And if anyone has any questions on these, our Community Development Director, Paul Lagg, is here, and Mary Knee, the chairperson of the Zoning Task Force.
Does anyone remember what day we had the presentation on this?
Oh, boy. Oh, so people could look at the meeting?
Yeah, because that, I feel like...
There is, on the, on the town website, on the town, there is a town meeting page that has the warrant, but it also has all of, anything that we've sent out to explain these articles is also listed on there. And Kayla Erkhart has done a nice job of organizing all those, so you can go in and see all the zoning articles, the presentation that was given to the board. Everything is on that page.
What did you say? February 6th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
That's a great idea. Thank you, Suzanne, for that. Article 7H is zoning ZBA review standards. You can kind of read through that and determine if you have any questions for, there will be plenty of people, including Paul, will be at town meeting, ready to, so, right? Paul will be there?
I believe so. Yes, he's nodding his head, yes.
Excellent.
Mary will also, too.
Yeah, terrific. Okay. Article 8 is basically the CPA funds and the allocation thereof, of how the committee has voted based on the applications that they had, the money that they had, based on the tax law, that they were able to disseminate out to the recipients in town who requested it. So that's kind of how that all works. I don't know if anybody has any specific questions on each individual award that they gave, but you can kind of read through them. Some of them are fairly standard, but some of them are new. So it's kind of exciting to see what people will do in the town for the next couple of years. And our...
I have your answer.
You're here. If anybody has any questions? Mary's here? Yeah? Maybe there's a question? Good for now, Mary. Article 9 is a petitioned article, plastic reduction, and, so the way this will kind of work is that at, you know, town meeting, petitioner will introduce the article, they'll make, they'll move, they'll move the article, instead of the select person moving the article, the petitioner will move the article, and then we'll give them a self-amounted time to kind of lay out their case for that article. And then what we'll do is then I'll circle back to see if anybody on the board would like to make a comment, then I'll circle back to anybody on the Finance Committee would like to make a comment, and you'll see their votes here, and then open it up to the general public, and, you know, we'll, I think we got away in the last couple of town meetings of having pros and cons line, we just have come up and speak lines. So, and I'll kind of, you know, do my thing, and the job of the moderator is to make sure everybody reasonably gets to make their case for what they want to talk about, and as long as everybody discusses it, and a nice...
Mr. Moderator, Karen Strauss has raised her hand. I'm not sure if it's on Article 8 or 9, but I'll promote her to the audience to talk.
Boy, I hope she answers the question I have in my brain.
Karen, is that you?
Yep, that's me.
A quick question. Are you the petitioner?
I am not the petitioner.
Okay.
And I'm asking about the petition article, which is 9. So what the warrant doesn't say, and what's unclear to me, is how this petition relates to the existing Chapter 60 of the Code of the Town of Eastham, which is the current plastics bylaw. Does this petition, if it passes, would it supersede that completely? Would it be integrated with that? My understanding is that the petitioners didn't even know we had that in place. So they, they make no provisions in the petition on how those would work together, and the notes in the warrant from the town don't discuss it at all either.
So Karen, as you know, and many people might not know, once a petitioned article is submitted, we can't change it. Only the petitioner can make changes. And so in answer to Karen's question, my best guess would be if this passes, we would send it to the Attorney General to do a review and make sure it's a legal article. And then if it comes back, it would be in addition to the bylaw we have, and if there are any overlaps that are confusing, we would have to clean that up next year.
Okay.
I'm glad you asked that question, though, because I had also been wondering this, and I think one of the reasons why the Select Board didn't vote to recommend this article is because we wanted more information. And one of the things that I would like more information on is how does this, because I think we already accomplished some of this already as a town, and so I would be curious to have something that's maybe a little more specific. And I think the board wanted some more details about, we had a lot of questions and not a whole lot of time to review the implications of this article, so.
There was also no outreach to the business community, which is, yeah, we have to do that.
Sort of essential. And I think the petitioner is not here, I don't see, but I think what, what he would say in response to your question about how does this fit in, he would say, it goes much farther. So it goes beyond the categories that we established in the bylaw last year, and it adds even compostable and recyclable plastics. So it just, it broadens the category to all plastics.
Right, but it also doesn't include the specific parts of the bylaw that address compostable and biodegradable standards.
Right. Right. I'll just briefly kind of reiterate, because you can see the, the board did not vote in favor of this petition article either. And if you look in your warrant, under the town summary portion, it does list out the reasons why. As you know, Select Board is very much in favor of all efforts to reduce plastics on the Cape, but with the conflict that we're seeing with this particular article coming in its form that it is, is the, and like Amy said, the no effort to engage with our business community. When we had our prior plastic ban that involved just water bottles and like a little more restricted, we had a public hearing, we had a lot of community engagement to work out all of those details so that it was a change that was not overwhelming for the business community, and it was something that felt manageable, and it felt, and they felt engaged in the process. And that's how we like to proceed with a lot of these changes that are really impactful, can be cost prohibitive, they can really impact businesses. And so we felt that if this was going to happen, yes, eventually, we're probably going to end up somewhere in this realm, but there needs to be an appropriate process. So that was why the board voted no on this one.
Is, for the notes, who is the petitioner?
Gary Senical.
Okay.
And it, I mean, I guess just for a point of information, is that this article has been on the town, on town meeting warrants across the Cape, so I think it was done by the same organization that brought us the plastic water bottle ban, and their goal was also to, you know, do kind of a Cape-wide, have this on as many town meeting warrant articles, warrants as possible. And they were not as successful as doing it in one year, one sweep. So it's been, you'll see it around town and in the news, probably.
Okay. Any specific questions on the petitioned article?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Did have a question typed online, asking why we skipped over Article 7 items, and I replied that people can feel free to raise their hand and ask a question if you're willing to go back, or maybe some further discussion that somebody might want.
Yeah, if somebody has a question, we went...
Maybe list them individually, just to...
Okay.
Instead of just saying 7A through 8G.
And also, in the meantime, Karen Strauss has raised her hand again.
Okay.
No, I did not mean to.
Okay.
Okay. So this, Article 7 is the zoning questions. So 7A is zoning definitions. 7B is zoning clear-cutting bylaw.
And just raise your hand if you have a question about any of these, whether you're remote or in person. Make sure you put your hand up as we come to something you'd want to speak to.
And Rich will just let me know. Article 7C is zoning setbacks. Article 7D is zoning residential lot intensity.
There was a question.
Okay. Got a question on...
Promote Tricia to the audience.
Okay.
Tricia, you're online. Just unmute. There you go.
Okay. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Great. Tricia Heim, I live on Pilgrim Lane. Actually, it was 7C I wanted to talk to, I just wasn't quick enough on my clicking.
7C it is.
7C it is.
So on 7C, with the relation to adding the in-ground pool, above-ground pools, et cetera, and the hard courts too close to the property line, I guess one of my questions is related to why we went this route instead of looking at a sound, noise, sound enforcement thing, because if you're, I don't want to have this in my backyard, certainly, or my neighbor's backyard, I mean, but that, that distance is not going to make a big difference if someone has a pickleball court. But I also don't like the regulation of it. So why did we go this route?
Well, so, this was proposed by the ZBA, so...
Nope, the Zoning Task Force.
That's what I mean.
Let Mary, let Mary answer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I, maybe I could explain? I was Mary.
Yeah, Mary's here. We got Mary.
Good evening. I'm Mary Knee, the Chair of the Zoning Task Force. This particular item, with regards to pools, what we found is that Eastham has been using a standard of a 12-foot setback for pools normally through the Building Department. That standard was not codified. So we decided we should codify it since that was, in fact, the practice. We also, looking at the pools, because of noise and, and, and other factors, included the pickleball courts and other hard surfaces. Currently, there is no regulation regarding those, those structures. There is a, there is a nuisance and noise ordinance, I understand, on, that is in place. It was sort of outside of the purview of the Zoning Task Force to really start looking at the issues of regulating noise, but those, those regulations are in place, and, you know, obviously, there would be a question as to whether they're effective enough, given issues like pickleball courts, but that was really beyond the scope of the task force.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mary.
Mary.
Mary, I might stay right there.
Sorry, Mary.
Sorry, Mary. That's a good suggestion. Stay right there, Mary.
Okay.
Okay. So I also wanted to ask about the primitive vegetation, related to the desire to have this primitive vegetation on the lots and what. When I look at the Cape and my experience around, at least my neighborhood, that's not the norm for us. Our norm is more to go with pineal and fewer bushes and plants along the perimeter.
I don't think, I don't think.
At least in my neighborhood.
We are not, we're not mandating that anyone needs to landscape. We are looking at the six-foot perimeter. This came, this, I'll tell you, this came up because there has been clear-cutting, and where people are clear-cutting to the edge of their property, there has been some adverse situations where property owners who've had some amount of vegetation and trees that have separated their properties from their neighbors, as well as separating their properties in particular from noise from Route 6, was diminished overnight. So we wanted to put in place a requirement that that vegetation needed to be maintained, although the reasonableness of this is that this would be something that would come through the Planning Board, and there would be a discussion with the Planning Board around mitigation. But in no way is this mandating that anyone needs to hire a landscaper and landscape and add new, new plantings to their property.
Thank you, Mary.
I guess the wording, though, says that we shall do this.
Yep.
So to that, to me, that reads as we could be required to do this if, for some reason, we had to go and work with the Planning Board on something for our property.
Well, I...
I understand the intent, but the wording is this.
Hello.
Paul Lag, everybody.
So the, the way it's worded is that it's, this bylaw will require owners to maintain a vegetated buffer within that perimeter, if there is one. As Mary said, it's not directing owners to have to go out and start landscaping. But if you have vegetation in your perimeter, it's going to require that you keep it in some form. It doesn't require that you have to add to it or do necessarily do anything to it. But if you want to clear it out completely, it prohibits that unless you go to the planning board. So basically, if you have something there, you, you need to keep it. You can add to it as you like, you can prune, you can clear areas out of it, you just cannot totally decimate and clear cut the whole area unless you go to the planning board so that there's some discussion about the impact on the neighborhood and the abutters. So that's, that, that shall wording is indicating that you shall maintain where it exists a vegetated buffer in some form. So if you have a row of five scrub pine trees, that's what you got. You can keep them, you can add to them, you can, like as I said, you can prune them. If they're diseased and so forth, there's exemptions for that, obviously. But that's the intent. And it's really intended to get at issues of neighborhood character. And as Mary mentioned, this is probably one of the most recurring items that comes before the planning board when we have residential site plan review is that the neighbors are concerned about the impact of development next door to them. And I tell you, the most common issue is a neighbor doesn't have an issue with the pro, the project that's next door to them, but they're concerned that they're clear cutting down to their property line. And then the property owner turns to the neighbor and says, well, you clear cut your lot three years ago, so why should I replace trees that you cut down? So this is always a chicken and egg kind of situation with something the task force wanted to address and kind of get in front of so that we don't have folks clear cutting to the property line and we can hopefully avoid some of these issues as they arise, get ahead of them. So a little bit of elaboration, but that's kind of the.
Can I ask?
That was great explanation.
Can I ask a follow-up question to Paul? Is it common when these things come before a planning board, for that to be recommended as part of the final approval or design? Okay.
Nearly every residential case has some element of landscape discussion. And one of the most common things is adding screening and buffering to mitigate the impacts of whatever the project might be on the neighbors. So that's.
So this will hopefully give the planning board a little, another tool to use when they're reviewing applications.
And hopefully it will, it will reduce or even eliminate that issue because there will have, there will be hopefully some buffer there, or at least the beginnings of something. And then it gets to, does it need to be added to, or is what, is there appropriate?
Thanks.
Mr. Moderator, I'm going to put Tricia back in the audience, but she can feel free to raise her hand again. We do have a, another question from Raymond Ashad, who I will promote.
Good afternoon, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Thanks, thanks for joining.
Thanks for the opportunity. Just a question, I'm going to go from Article 7B up to Article 7A for definitions. So under Article 7B, 6.111 exemptions, the second bullet under that is what I believe you were just discussing, which is routine maintenance vegetation and removal of hazardous trees. When I go up to the definition of a hazardous tree, it looks like it was modified in this warrant to include a tree with a structural defect or disease which impedes safe site distance or traffic flow, or otherwise currently poses a threat to life or property as identified by a certified arborist or the tree warden. Obviously, here on the Cape, we have a lot of really terrible storms. And I don't believe in a lot of cases there is time to contact someone to have them certify that this tree is in fact a threat to life or property. So I guess what was the definition of hazardous tree prior to this warrant? And how is that going to be construed moving forward?
We did not have in the zoning bylaw a definition for that. So this is a new definition in support of the clear cutting bylaw.
So in fact, the property owners are required to contact the tree warden or a certified arborist before they are eligible to be exempt in that second bullet underneath the exemptions?
So.
Is that correct?
This is really only applicable when you are proposing to, I guess in two instances, when you're proposing to clear cut an area, or with regard to what is defined here as a legacy tree. So if we're talking about small-scale trees, scrub pines, so on, there's, those are basically exempt because it's not a legacy tree. So we're really trying to get at that issue. It's not, we're not trying to regulate every, taking down every tree. It's not, obviously not feasible to do that. So it's really wrapped into the clear cutting and the protection of larger diameter legacy trees.
Is, is there a state definition or a definition of clear cutting that would, and I get the general gist of it, but just to ask the question, is there a percentage basis or in a row, or is there any kind of definition of what clear cutting means? Reason why I ask is, is we have a bunch of scrub pines. And obviously with the way that they grow in clusters, anything in the middle of two larger trees gets choked out and eventually dies. And would, would this new regulation apply to a situation like that whereas we were trying to, trying to let the other trees grow and be healthy?
Well, the way we've defined it in the, in this proposed bylaw is that it's really the, it's, it's the act of removing all trees or all shrubs or all understory vegetation on the site, removing everything. But we've tried to be specific in that if you remove all of the trees from the site, but you keep all the shrubs and all the understory, that is clear cutting. Conversely, if you wanted to remove all of the shrubs and understory growth, but leave all the trees, that is also clear cutting. So, but to your question, what I think your, your example is you can still prune, clear, selectively clear out trees. So if you're trying to clear out a smaller tree that, or tree that's choking out new growth, that would not fall under this definition of clear cutting. It's when you take out all the vegetation.
Paul, wasn't, this is more directed towards when you're building a new house on a piece of property, or you're tearing a house down. This was really directed at. So you just don't clear cut the lot to build. You try and build where you can avoid taking down legacy trees.
Correct, so, yes.
This wasn't meant for the normal homeowner that basically is, is already got a house and is maintaining the property. This is really.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, I'm glad you raised that point. So when you go to the clear cutting bylaw, 7B, it differentiates between undeveloped and developed properties. So the goal is to prohibit clear cutting, again, removing all vegetation from undeveloped properties unless you have a building permit, indicating that there's a project that's going to move forward and we assume house-built, revegetation, new planting. So it prohibits that unless you have the building permit. And then for developed, it's really, that just ties back into this perimeter vegetation. So we're not trying to regulate every hydrangea bush that you put in or whatever. We're trying to prohibit clear cutting within that perimeter for the neighbor, neighbor, neighboring property buffers.
Thank you, Paul. Is anybody, I think we bounced around a little bit on 7, so I don't know if there's any, anybody at home or in the audience has any specific questions on any of the Articles 7A through 7G?
Tricia, again.
H is separate, so I want to kind of keep that.
Mr. Moderator, I promote Tricia, previous guest.
Okay.
Again, so kind of two questions, more for Paul. I guess one is kind of an understanding procedurally for when this kind of thing happens, is so for people that already have what they have today on a developed lot, perimeter, legacy trees that are there, that kind of stuff is in place and they don't have to change based on any of these zoning bylaw changes, right?
Correct.
Correct.
So only if it's a new build, or if you're doing something massive on your property, would this come into play?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then, and that, so that would be the case too with like the driveway restriction? Where you have to be not within the six feet? So if your, if your driveway is already in, you don't have to worry, you don't have to move it. But if you did something massive, would it be questioned?
If, the existing driveways are in place, so there's no requirement that you're going to have to relocate. The only time I would see that as an issue would be if you were doing a large-scale project that required that you went to the planning board for review. And if for some reason that was identified as an issue by the planning board, if you were, if you were planning to, you know, alter your driveway or something, or it comes up as an abutter issue, something that might be mitigated, that's, that's an issue that, where it might be a recommendation or a condition to alter the driveway. But otherwise, what you have is in place, we're not requiring you to alter your driveway, even if it's on the property line now.
Great, thank you, Paul. And Mary, I apologize, I was given incorrect information, but you are the Chair of the Zoning Bylaw Committee, Task Force.
Residential Zoning Task Force.
Okay, great. Well, thank you and look forward to hearing from you, I'm sure, at the town meeting. And then just for my own edification, was the planning board decided to set up the, the review committee? That's why they're voting on this, is, no? Who, I mean, who appointed this committee?
The Select Board a couple of years ago, set up the zoning task force.
Okay.
And they have to vote on every zoning bylaw.
And then, and for people at home, you'll see, the planning board has sort of done their summary, right? The summaries were by the planning board, the end of these articles?
So, Mr. Moderator, these, the task force was set up, appointed by the Select Board.
Okay.
The task force worked on all of these recommendations, but the process under Master General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, the planning board is appointed with the responsibility to actually hold the public hearing, and they're required to provide a summary report to town meeting. So the task force did the, did the work, they got turned over to the planning board, they had their public hearing. And we'd worked closely with the planning board and zoning board throughout the process too, so.
Great. Well, I was just trying to get everybody to understand, including myself, why and how we got to where we are, and this is why you're seeing the planning board, because Paul helped us out with that. So any other questions on any of the 7A through H articles?
I just have a comment. It is A through H.
Right, I was separating H because it was a review standards question, so that was sort of, yeah. But we're going to do them individually on Saturday. We're not going to group anything in case, because we have individual votes in case there's any, you know, I think to try to clump those, I don't think it would be in our best interest.
So we're still, we're just on D? Is that what we're?
No, I think we skipped all over.
Oh, okay. Oh, I didn't know.
People have asked various questions, yeah.
Okay.
You know, everybody can read, you know, they're there, but yeah, and we've covered all of them, we've bounced around a little bit, so. If there's no other specific questions?
No, the only thing, I would echo Jackie's comments earlier that they've done a great job of posting all of this information on the town website, including the full task force report, which goes into a lot of the analysis as to why we made these recommendations. So I would just encourage people to check that out.
Yes, seconded. It was a great report and great analysis.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we went through, we've gone through the eight articles, we've gone, we talked about Article 9, the petition article. We have some appendices. Anybody else, any questions, specific or general from the audience or at home? Anyone seeing none? Anyone from the board? What comments or?
Are we going to have the Jeopardy music?
See you on the second. I hope not. No Jeopardy.
No fun at town meeting.
No Jeopardy, but you will get to do your thing at the beginning if you like.
A little quote?
A little quote.
All right, I will, I'll think of a good one, I'll get a good one.
All right, Ms. Town Administrator, anything else for the good of the order?
I am all set, thank you.
Rich?
Good questions.
No one at home? Well, again, this is our fundamental event for our town, where we do the, the business of the town. A lot of work goes into this to get to where we are today. Certainly appreciative of all of the different committees in town where, except for the small stipend that these folks get up front, it's the whole polling chair work. So a lot goes into this, and now we'll get to talk about it and vote on it and hear from your fellow citizens. And can't think of a better way to move our town forward than to have a town meeting where everybody gets to say what's on their mind. Mr. Moderator?
One other thing I'd just like to emphasize, and Jackie already mentioned it, at the back of this warrant is the status of the work we've done as a result of the Strategic Planning Committee. So it talks about, you know, what the Strategic Planning Committee said they wanted to get done, and what we wanted to get done as a town, and where we are on that. So I think it's a really, really good synopsis of the things we have accomplished in the last couple of years. So take time to read it because it is worthwhile.
No, and as somebody who was on the original Strategic Planning Committee, a lot of work goes into it, a lot of alliterations have happened from it, and it's nice to see that the board is, is keeping an eye on what was the original strategic plan, where we are, what modifications and alterations we want to make as we move through, you know. So I could stay for more, but I don't have any reason, so I will.
We'll see you on the sixth.
See you on the sixth, Jerry.
Town meeting's more fun with friends.
And keep your fingers crossed for good weather, and I thank everybody for coming and really had a great time tonight, so thanks again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, so we just have one more task.
Right.
Assigning the articles.
Oh, geez.
I think we should throw all the numbers in half.
No, 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 I have to.
Let her finish.
For personal reasons, I may have to leave relatively early. So give me all of them up front. Get them, give me all the stuff up front.
Okay, all right. So, and just so you know, Suzanne too, we, each of us presents the articles, so we assign it so that we know ahead of time what we're presenting. Basically, read the summary, and if you want some of them, if I find it necessary to add a little bit more, especially if it's something you're particularly invested in.
And we can help with bullet points if needed.
Yeah, if you're nervous about something, Jackie and Rich help a lot when you get stung. So, all right, so let's just jump right into it.
My microphone's off. Okay. So Article 1.
I'll do that.
Okay, I'm going to do it this way because this helps me figure out who's doing what. All right, Jerry is Article 1. Then we got 2A.
I'll do 2A if you like.
That's a toughie, that's a lot of reading.
I'll do 2A.
Oh, he's going for it, okay. 2A, then we got 2B, which is the water.
Jerry?
Yeah, sure, I'll do the water.
Okay. Then we have 2C, which is collective bargaining.
Bargaining.
I can do that.
All right.
Then 3A, five-year capital plan. Suzanne, do you want to do that?
Sure.
I can do it if you want.
Yeah, I mean.
Or were you, do you have, did you have something else you wanted to?
I was going to maybe pick one that I, I can do the five-year capital plan.
Yeah, let's give Jerry that.
I can do it.
Yeah, because he's going to skip out.
I'm going to leave you high and dry, you're right. Can't believe you're skipping out. Geez, God. I'm going to fix that.
3B, capital budget.
Well, since I'm doing 3A, I might as well do B since it's all capital budget.
All right, thanks, Jerry. All right, so 3, where's C? C, oh, rock carbon dredge, Amy?
Yeah.
Okay, 3D is the bond authorization for wastewater.
I mean, I could do that unless someone had a burning desire for it.
Yeah, I think I'm going to pass that one for art, yeah.
Go for it.
I think either, yeah, either myself or. Then that was 3D, so we have 4A.
Wait a minute, who's doing 3D?
Art.
I'll do, I'll do 4A.
We'll blame it on Rich. Amy, 4A. Now we have 4B, which is the established fund, this is the.
Snoozy.
Oh, okay.
Hold on, that's for the.
I mean, I could also do, I mean.
Yeah, you want to do that, Suzanne? Um, and then 4C.
I could also, unless someone has a very strong feeling about it.
So this ties into the wastewater, so I wonder, Art, would you want to do this one?
Sure.
Because this is the short-term rental tax associated.
Sure.
4D, this is the cell tower lease.
Who's doing 4C?
Oh, Art.
Art.
4D is the authorization of lease for the cell tower lease.
Uh, I can do that if, unless someone else has a.
Suzanne?
The boring ones.
4E is the.
Oh, they're related, right?
Yeah.
So I'll do that one too then.
Okay.
I'll gladly do 5A, so we don't have to meet on Saturday and get blamed on that we have nefarious thoughts.
5B, authorized town clerk to be closed on Saturdays.
I'm happy to do that.
Amy? Okay.
I think that's the hardest one because it's incomprehensible. Amy is going to do that one?
Yes.
Thanks. Why didn't you say that first?
No, say that after.
They can take Saturday off and it's counted as a holiday.
I still can't figure out why we have that one.
I'll do 5C.
Okay, Art, oh, yeah, that's, okay. Article six.
I'll do six. I did the first one.
Oh, that's the one with the mistake, yeah.
Right.
All right.
That town council made, not us.
Now we go, 7A, which is definitions.
I'm sorry, I did not hear.
Amy's doing six.
Thank you.
Okay.
6A, perfect.
Okay, article 7A.
Definitions, I'll do that.
Suzanne?
Amy.
Oh, Amy, okay, I didn't see. Okay. 7B, the, I'll do that if you want.
It should be the anti-clearcutting bylaw.
Right.
I know. I'll do that one.
You do one of that one?
Yep. Then 7C, setbacks.
I could do setbacks unless someone.
Oh, okay, I just wanted to make sure someone was comfortable, like, are you good with that one?
Yes, because, yeah, yes, yeah, yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah? Okay.
I can't believe we didn't have one question on 37.
I'll do 7D.
Okay. Thank you, Art.
I can't, 7D, I can't believe we didn't have a question on 7D. That's the one I thought.
It's amazing.
Warriors.
We all about trees this year.
Okay, 7, yeah, thanks for passing that one to me.
We're dogs.
Uh, where the heck is 7E?
Inclusionary.
Inclusionary bylaw on page 40.
Oh, here we go. 7E.
I'll do that.
Okay.
Was that Amy that said you did that?
Yep, that's Amy. 7F is the perimeter vegetation. I can do that one too, since I'm sure no one wants to. 7F, 7G, site plan review standards.
I'll do that.
Art, okay, great. I was hoping you'd say that. 7H, ZBA review standards. I'll do that one. Yeah, we need motions for all these.
We need motions.
Okay. Article eight, CPA.
They usually take those all together, don't they?
Those, yeah, and I wonder if Scott, I'm hoping Scott knows that those usually do get grouped.
He, what he does is he says, does anyone have any?
Any objection?
Right, I think he knows that 7 is going to be separated, but that one maybe he will do that with, okay.
Who's, who's got 7H?
Uh, I do. 8, so 8 is going to be all together.
I'll do it if you like.
I could also do it. Four is eight of them. And then if, if people want individual and, you know.
Then they'll break them down.
We could, yeah. Or Suzanne, do it. Sure.
Suzanne doing that? I don't, I'll, I'll do it unless Suzanne really wants to do it.
It's a long piece if we do them in one motion. It's, it's like a page of reading, really. Just so you know.
I mean, I'm not bad at, I, like, I'm physically capable of reading and talking.
I'm willing to do it, but if you really want to do it, it's fine.
I just know some people like sometimes have a hard time with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll give it to Suzanne.
You got it.
Yes, I, and that's it. And maybe I'll practice it.
Well, that'll be individuals as we choose to respond.
No, I'm just telling you, you sound like Wally. Wally hated to read long things. He always wanted short motions.
I tried to get some that were short.
Jamie, on article nine, do you want someone, I mean, I'll be going to.
We raise our hand to speak to that.
Speak and you're going to, okay.
Because the petitioner, the petitioner.
I know the petitioner moves it, but it's just the response from the.
Do we want to have one person speak? Like, do we want to dedicate one person to speak or do we want to just respond as we see fit? I guess that's up to the board.
Now, should I give Suzanne the talking points for all the CPA articles individually?
I would, yes, as, in case, yep. Yeah, so as a board, this is a question for you. Do you, how do you want to do that? Do you want? To dedicate one person or?
I think it would be helpful for us to, I know it's in the warrant and people can read it, but it might be helpful to quickly.
Well, if somebody, if somebody.
Say the town summary.
Come and kind of justify, explain why we voted the way we did.
Right.
Very simply, just, you know, what, what we said, needs more input, needs more work.
No communication with businesses. Did you want to do it? Do that, Amy?
Because she's doing CPA reports. So nine, rebuttal.
Jackie, do you think any of them need any additional, you know, how sometimes we take and try and justify? Do you think any of them need any of that?
I think we should be really prepared for zoning or I need to be very prepared to prepare Paul and Mary. You know what I'm saying? We need to, the zoning ones, you never know what questions someone's going to ask.
I feel like for the concern with the tree stuff and the clear cutting.
It's all about the trees this year.
That we should have them prepared to speak to them as an extension of the presentation of the article.
I forgot, Kayla, what are we going to have for handouts for town meeting? Are we going to have a wastewater handout, do you think? Did we decide to do that or not? Digital brochure?
Yeah.
I don't, honestly, after tonight, I'm feeling more comfortable. I mean, Rich or I are going to answer any questions about the operating budget, so then you get into the capital budgets, I don't see any huge big deal there.
Probably the, the contracts.
I think that that could be an area where people will ask questions, so.
What, the, the union contracts?
I mean, why we, why we need an override, maybe because, you know, I mean, we kind of did agree to this last year, they just don't know that. But it is addressed in both the select board summary and in the FICCOM summary.
If they get inflation at eight percent and a cap at two and a half percent, well, you know.
Jackie, you have someone that is flash? Yeah, someone flash.
We got one on the contract.
So can we do another one on the zoning if you wanted to? I'm just not sure, I mean, I think at town meeting, we have to look at the Zoom thing, I mean, the constant contact thing and see how long we can sign people up via text because I think that's the problem. We have 1,700 people that are getting flashes, but that still leaves a lot of people who aren't.
Right.
And they're all on the website, but you have to care to go on the website.
Are we able, you said, oh, it was somewhere that, where was it? It was somewhere in our packet that you were going to do outreach through Facebook and whatnot, so I feel like.
Yeah, they're doing all of that, yeah.
Yeah, I feel like we get a good number of people through Facebook.
I'm not worried about anything, are you?
Well, I think being prepared for the, the tree clear cutting.
Tree.
And even though we didn't get any questions tonight.
Wastewater.
The restricted zoning, the zoning restrictions. You're going to need to be able to either can that off to someone or explain that one.
So I just did an interview with Lower Cape TV, so they're going to be doing a pre-town meeting thing that they send out to all their subscribers and we can attach that to a flash or whatever, but they did, I did point out, I, I, I did a tiny bit on the tree cutting, but I did most of it on the lot intensity. No, the.
Lot intensities.
The one that we thought was going to, and I said, in that video, I said, if you have a question, please call Paul Lag, and I gave his email address, because really, you can't figure this out by yourself.
No.
And then, so.
But I'm shocked that we haven't gotten more questions on that one.
And the wastewater, maybe just a short blurb that says, you know, just kind of reemphasizes everything we're saying.
Yeah, what you said tonight was great.
We can do the, Rich and I dog and pony, so, so the things that we need to add are that summary of why.
Yeah.
How, how we can't access the money without, that's a good one.
Yes. That, and also the, the fact that it will not be townwide.
Right, it won't be town, yeah. And I think, don't, don't say IA septic, you got to, first time you got to explain it. This is enhanced septic system, which is expensive to put in.
Yeah, you did a good idea, good job of like bulging them out, like you gave a one, two, three, and then you did the.
Jane thought I was okay.
Yeah. You can just watch what you said tonight and repeat.
Honey, I'm on, I'm on a loop now.
If there's anything you want me to say, I'll let me.
Okay, I'll give you the same talking points, so we'll both have them.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
All right, team.
I think that's it.
What, what are we wearing? I don't know if anybody is.
That's what I, I, I think we had to figure that out two days before.
I need to know what the weather is.
I'm trying to think of whether I could wear a dress with like leggings and socks and I had, I had.
Yeah, Jerry and I, Jerry and I are really worried about what we're going to wear.
Yeah.
It's kind of a joke because I wore my swimsuit.
You guys kind of look the same every day, we're expected.
We're just going to, we're just really struggling with this.
When you're cold and I have a thermostat.
Should I wear my black suit and my brown shoes or red, what color tie?
Wear our, our team shirts. So Karen followed up with me about the, the cons comm Wiley Park public comment, and she said that the, hold on, the comment period is closed for the listening session, but there will be additional opportunities to comment on their regulations in the form of the public hearing and that people are welcome to watch the May 2nd joint work session, but it's a work session, so the public would be just watching and not participating or.
Just watching in horror.
Yeah, I have a question. If they worked, I mean, look, we've got a lot of stuff on, on the dog issue and it's not ours, but have, have they at all talked with the Cape Cod Seashore, you know, there were all no pet signs on a lot of paths and now they're gone, what they've done, is there any kind of coordination?